Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is absolutely wonderful that all the people that know each other here tonight, friends, families, and whatnot, are visiting. I really enjoy seeing that. So how is everybody tonight?
Doing well, thank you.
What, how's that? How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
Doing well.
You know, you folks in the area of education, you know, you expect more from your students, so I expect more from you. Loud and proud. So let's show that the council meeting for tonight is in session. All, well, not all council members are here. Let the record reflect that council member... I was going to say all. I'm so used to saying "all" here, right? Let the record reflect that Councilmember Hall is out sick, so he is excused, and then the rest of the council is here. And tonight, the invocation will be given by Pastor Phil Harrington, and I will tell you what his little biography is here, just because we like supporting and telling people a little bit about him. Pastor Phil Harrington, he's also known as Dr. Phil, imagine that. Dr. Phil comes to us from Pathways Community Church, where he has been a lead pastor since 1993. And that's older than some of the folks in this room. Sorry to say, but it's the truth. Pathways Church is genuinely about loving God and people. They seek to be a community of help, hope, and healing. Pathways initially met in rented facilities for the first 10 years of existence, and since, December 2003, has occupied their home on Mast and Carlton Hills Boulevards. Dr. Phil has been in Christian ministry since age 17, is a licensed and ordained minister. Dr. Phil has proudly served the San Diego County Sheriff's Department as an area chaplain for the Santee Station since 1995. He is also an active member of the Santee Lakeside Rotary Club and enjoys serving our community. Dr. Phil, how would the church not meet its goals if it weren't for you and your hope, help, and healing with your leadership? We're going to ask that you pray tonight for the United States of America, State of California, and of course, the city of Santee and its elected officials and the people that live here and call it home. And then the Pledge of Allegiance will follow by, and will be led by... Where'd Joel Anderson go? He knew this was going to happen. Joel's going to be, Supervisor Anderson's going to be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So you come to this meeting, you might have to be put to work, so... And please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you pray with me? Lord God of the heavens and the universe, we are so grateful for the privilege of living in a city like Santee. You have blessed us richly and deeply. We thank you for the leadership that you provided for our city, for our county, for our state, and for our nation, and we do, as the mayor said, we pray for wisdom, for discernment, for discretion, that you would help them see and know and hear from you and lead in a way that would benefit the constituents. So we're asking you to lead, and we pray for Ron Hall tonight, that you would help him feel better soon, that you would heal his body and bring him back into service soon. We thank you for this time that we could gather as citizens, and we ask that the communications and any issues that come up, that would be handled with grace and kindness. In your name we pray. Amen.
Supervisor.
I'd just like to say, we live in the greatest nation in the world, so let's say our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. All right. The only thing that I want to reorder on the agenda tonight is I'm going to do the Santee Financial Fund Awareness Day first, and then we'll go on to the other proclamation for Heartland second. And so are there any other items to be added, deleted, or reordered on the agenda?
None for me.
Vice Mayor?
No, sir.
Councilmember?
No, sir.
City manager?
No, sir.
City attorney?
Yes, sir.
Any speaker slips?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. So then, I'm going to ask Terry and Anthony to come on up to the front and join me, and Supervisor Anderson. Come on over here. Should I be on the outside?
Wait, Anthony. Yeah, we're at the edges.
We have a nice bookend.
Yes.
So tonight with me is Terry Bozier from Momentum Tutoring, Anthony Zambelli from Funding Education? What, I'm sorry, say it again?
San Diego Center for Economic Education.
That's what I meant to say. And obviously Supervisor Joel Anderson from the County of San Diego. And I'm going to start with the proclamation, and then we'll do the other presentation. So Santee Proclamation. Whereas Momentum Tutoring and the San Diego Council for Economic Education and organizing and hosting family financial fund nights in Santee throughout 2024, and whereas family financial fund nights are interactive family events which mimic real-world scenarios, led by leaders from local community organizations, and which aim to create experiences that encourage their families to learn about personal finance and discuss topics like savings, spending, debt, and budgeting. And whereas the aim of these events is to empower families to become financially savvy together, and whereas the primary event will be held Wednesday, April 24, 2024, at Momentum Tutoring headquarters in Santee from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., preceded by a complimentary dinner from 5:30 to 6:00 o'clock p.m. And whereas these events were brought to Santee through a $25,000 neighborhood reinvestment grant provided by District 2 Supervisor Joel Anderson and his office, I now therefore, John Minto, the mayor of the city of Santee, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, April 24, 2024, as Santee Financial Fund Awareness Days in the city of Santee and encourage students and their families to take part in the worthwhile learning experiences. All right, Tom?
Thank you.
And we're going to probably want to get a couple pictures. Anybody else who wants pictures of this, come on up, and then we'll move to the others.
Is it okay if I get the kids up here?
You can bring them.
Wait, you have to wait, right?
Well, you know what? Let's do these...
Bring them up.
Yeah, kids, come on up, come on up. My youth biz club, because this is a huge part of us.
So Quanis is part of this too, right?
Yes, absolutely.
So how about the Quanis members that are here? Come on up also. Anybody else that's a participant?
We have no regional leaders.
But no regional leaders.
Come on, Amber. Come on over.
Come on, Joel, it's my home club.
Come on, Jess, come on up. We got enough pictures.
Don't be shy.
And Donna, our board member. Donna.
Come on, get in here.
They're never shy until the camera comes out, right?
Your smile on us, everybody.
Okay, and stay here, because when we do these other presentations, we're probably going to want to do some other pictures on that too.
I think so.
Okay. Anthony, you want to go next?
Okay. Because I'm a college professor, it takes me 20 minutes to clear my throat. Do you all have time?
No.
No, okay. Then I will be quick.
As a matter of fact, I'm...
I'm representing Queen America College, the San Diego's... Oh, I have a teacher voice.
No, but that's...
I represent Queen America College, and the San Diego Center for Economic Education at Queen America College promotes economic and financial literacy throughout San Diego County. This is our first time working with Momentum, and we are presenting a Financial Literacy Hero Award to Momentum for promoting financial literacy for families and children in Santee.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a proclamation somewhere around here. Oh, is it? No.
Over here.
Up, there we go. Excellent. Thank you very much. So there's nothing in my proclamation that hasn't been said before, except for one item, and that is... No, I'm blind as a bat. I, hold it. I'm going to give this to you, because it's for you. But I have senior print. So the most important part of this proclamation is that it says that be it proclaimed by me, Joel Anderson, in District 2, Supervisor of the County of San Diego's 2nd District, we do hereby proclaim the 17th day of April 2024 is Momentum Tutoring Family Financial Fun Day in San Diego County. So I just want to tell you how much we appreciate your hard work in how our children's futures and family futures are all tied to people being able to budget and understand how to build economic income and wealth, so they can move on to a much more prosperous day. Thank you for your hard work, and with that, I'd like to present you with this check. And thank you. And I want to also thank the mayor and the council. Santee is an incredible community. You do such a great job. Quanis plays an important role here in Santee, and thank you so much for Quanis, for all their hard work on this project. And Mr. Mayor, this is your mic.
All of this is really for them. Let's commit to them. Isabella, come on up and get along with this. You hold it too, because all my life, all I've ever wanted was a big check, and here it is. Thank you, guys.
So as we finish up here, I just want to say a couple of more things, and this is more like on a personal note. Come on. Is that any better?
Just hold it up to your mouth.
Deputy, can you remove this man? So, you know, it's kind of fun for me, because Terry and I, we probably met six, seven years ago. I can't even remember anymore. It might be longer.
It was 15 years ago.
Oh, my goodness.
So yesterday.
You said yesterday.
But about six years ago, he did come into our center with that program that you do, reaching out.
We do a vision program. We go out to businesses and other types of industries and meet with them and talk about what they need from us as a city, and is there anything that we do stands in your way? And so ever since then, we've kind of met regularly. We've been involved in a lot of different things. Last year, we did the Children's Business Fair. Lot of fun, let me tell you, watching the kids put all these practices to work and everything, and seeing what their imaginations can come up with. And so this is one reason why it's so easy, so easy to become involved with this, because not only is there public education, but charter schools, and you know, tutoring is one of the best tools, I think, that we can provide for the youth. And one of the reasons is because eventually, they're going to come back around and be the tutors. So they were mentored, and they become the mentors, and I think that's absolutely wonderful. And I know that goes on at Momentum Tutoring, because I've seen it, participated in it. And I just want to say thank you to Terry for all the hard work she's done over the years, and you know, she has a good staff, she's got good volunteers, but you know what? Somebody has to lead them, and Terry is a great leader in that area. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. You can go ahead and put that in the bank now, young ladies. You got a bank account, right?
They do, and all of these young ladies participated in the fair last year, and they also just last week or two weeks ago did a Shark Take Challenge, where they all pitched to Momentum's team, and it was, it gives me goosebumps thinking about it. You guys can't wait to see what's happening. These are our future, and that everybody's supporting them with us. You guys, this is awesome. Right, Laura? And Laura, please stand up, because Laura did come last year and be a part of something called...
All right.
GTS.
All right.
Gifted talent to this problem.
Yep. All right, let's move on.
All right, everybody shake their hand. Mayor Minto, and...
Oh, there we go.
Shake their hands.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Good job. Good night. Good job. Don't forget, there's pizza. Good job.
I'll see you guys later. You're in charge.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Joel.
Oh, my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your time. Is it okay if we sneak out?
You don't have to sneak. I encourage you to walk right on out.
I forgot, I was so excited. And we're not going to keep this, um, right? We'll make this quick, but this is the reason actually we wanted to come. Supervisor Anderson, we want to say thank you. The grant that you provided Momentum Tutoring was put to work, and we had 12 businesses really do start up, and so we wanted to present you with this. And Isabella and Lana, do you want to give it to them? It's just a little picture of all the businesses that were formed over last week, and we're going to look for these businesses in the future. And we also have a little card from myself and some reactions from the parents.
Oh, that's awesome. Thank you so much. It means so much to me. It gives me enough credit, so often I have a newsletter, I love to feature them.
You got that?
By the way, that's called Earn Media, and it's free advertising. Keep up the good work.
Right, thank you.
All right, we're going to go on to the next item, and that is going to be recognizing Heartland Communications Facilities and Authority. So I'm going to ask Jeff Logan to come up. Is he here? Oh, there you are. Didn't see you hiding. And Councilmember Kovol is going to actually make this presentation, and I'm going to let you describe what your job is and why you want to do it. You do that when we get up there, if you want.
I'll say it right here. So when I was elected in 2018, very first time, the very first commission I was asked to be on is the Heartland Communications Facility Authority Commission, and I've gotten to know Jeff and some of his team members over the years. Jeff has done an amazing job as their leader. The work that the 911 dispatchers do is just some of the most amazing work in San Diego County, and you know, it's actually my privilege to be on this commission. I love serving, and I don't do that much, I just attend meetings that are very short, but you know, I love to be involved with this organization. The dispatchers are so important in our community, and so I thank all of you for what you do. And we do have a... Are we going to show the video first? So we'll show the video first, and then we'll do the presentation. I believe Santee TV put together, the staff at City of Santee put together this video.
Every day when emergencies strike, there is a team that works tirelessly behind the scenes. Welcome to the heart of the action, Heartland Communications. In this video, we'll take you behind the call to meet the unsung heroes who are the first line of response. Behind every calm voice on the phone is a dispatcher trained to handle any situation, equipped with expertise to guide callers through emergencies. Take a glimpse into a day in the life of a 911 dispatcher, the challenges, the victories, and the unwavering commitment to public safety. Meet our diverse team, dedicated individuals from all walks of life, united by a common goal, to serve and protect our community.
Fire medical emergency? Si hablo español. ¿Cuál es la dirección de su emergencia? Dígame exactamente qué pasó.
Fire medical emergency? What is the address of the emergency?
Okay, tell me exactly what happened.
Our dispatchers are empowered by cutting-edge technology, which ensures quick and precise response to every call. Working in high-stress situations, our 911 professionals remain calm, focused, and resilient, providing vital support to those in need.
Fire medical emergency? Listen carefully, I'm going to tell you how to do chest compressions. One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four.
Fire medical emergency? Tell me exactly what happened. What kind of vehicle was it?
Okay, we're on the way. If anything changes, or if you get any more information, call us back, okay? You're welcome.
These are the faces and voices that answer the call in your darkest hour, our 911 dispatchers, the unsung heroes behind the call, always ready to make a difference. Thank you to our 911 dispatch team for their dedication and service. For more information on how to join our team, visit heartlandfire.net. Together, let's continue making a difference.
Okay, so let's invite all the staff up, and Jeff, come on up. And while they're walking up... I had never been in a 911 center before, and maybe you all saw all those screens that they have to navigate, and you know, one person... How many screens do you have per person? Six or seven? Could you imagine? And you know, I've sat with some of you before, and they'll take in a call, get it to a certain point, and then maybe have to pass it to somebody else. So somebody's listening to the other person talking about that call as well. So talk about multitasking. It's incredible. But what I want us to do today is, we have certificates of recognition, so I want to read about the certificates. And if I mispronounce a name, let me know. Okay. The Southern California 911 Awards Banquet will be held in Buena Park on Friday, April 19, 2024. Heartland Communications Facility Authority Executive Director Jeff Logan nominated HCFA staff members for the special recognition category. They are Shift Supervisor Alexis Sanchez, and Fire Communications Dispatchers Kim Gonzalez, Matt Ruperty, Amy Cox, and Alisa Garcia. Jeff also nominated Senior GIS Analyst Justin Nettleton, who I just met right before today, as GIS Analyst of the Year. All were selected and will be honored on April 19, and I do plan on making the drive up. Staff were nominated for special recognition because of a surge incident resulting in extremely high call volume. On a routine day, emergency call center staff processed an average of 333 phone calls. On January 22, they processed 839 calls, with 296 of those handled in a two-hour window. On a routine day, ECC staff dispatched for an average of 135 incidents. On January 22, they dispatched 344 incidents. Of note is that this was Alisa's first day, working independently, I'm sorry, working independently, and Matt and Amy had only completed their training in the prior two to three months. Kim provided backup and mentoring to the new staff, dispatched emergency response units, and answered over 150 emergency calls that day. Alexis provided leadership, assisted with movement and coverage of available units, and supported all positions in the emergency call center. And I think what's missing is what actually happened that day, which were the floods, right? Yes, so it was in response to the flooding. And then additionally, Justin Nettleton's expertise in geographic information systems ensures that the dispatchers have accurate information to perform their duties with unparalleled precision and effectiveness, getting emergency vehicles swiftly directed to scenes of emergencies. Well beyond his GIS duties, Justin manages statistical data use for operational and financial decisions, conducts training sessions for end-users on various data systems, and has taken the lead on development of a new website for the organization. So please help me in... Congratulate, let's do a round of applause for their award, and then we'll hand out the certificate. So here's the proclamation. We have Alexis, Amy, Alisa, Kim, Matt, not here?
Not here.
All right. And Justin. All right, so the proclamation... Oh, there's a bunch of where-ases. So I'm just going to say, I've read why they are, what the proclamation is, or what we're doing, but I'm going to read this part. Well, I, Laura Kovol, on behalf of the mayor, John Minto, do hereby proclaim the week of April 14 through April 20, 2024, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the city of Santee, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our citizens and cities safe. So thank you very much.
I'll try and make this brief. First of all, to the mayor, vice mayor, and entire city council, thank you so much for this recognition, for this team here that deserves everything that comes their way. What you see before you right now is a group of dispatchers who understand the call and the pressure of being that voice on the other end of the phone when someone needs help, and being the voice of help is on the way, and I'm going to stay here with you until they get there. They answer that call every day. It's incredibly stressful. Imagine doing a job where every word spoken over the phone or the radio is recorded and saved forever. Every keystroke made on the computer is recorded and saved forever, and under that pressure, they still thrive and provide emergency services. So this is a great team. These are your dispatchers here in the city of Santee for fire and EMS.
All right, that was the fun stuff. All right, do you have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion, a second? Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And go to the first round of non-agenda public comment. Speaker's slip?
We have one speaker, sir. Denise Lotta.
Hello, everybody.
Hi there.
I've been nominated by my neighbors to talk.
We need you to speak into the microphone.
Hi, everybody. Denise Lotta. Been a member of the community since 1990, raising my kids here, and been a homeowner in different places of the city. And I've been nominated by my neighbors to talk to you today, so it's not an item on the agenda. But we did just get notification that someone's applied to place 50 unit townhomes on our street, which is right here on Summit Crest Drive. If you may be familiar with the church there, Calvary. So the reason I'm here to talk to you is just to let you know that we're very concerned about that. We will be writing in the questions that we all have with regard to the impact that that's going to have on this street that is not developed, that does not have... We're all on septic tanks up there, and we have horses, and we take care of deers, and bobcats, and raccoons, and lots of birds of prey, and we're a little bit worried about the environment, too. So when we have a little bit more information to ask for, we will be asking for it, but I would like you to take into consideration that it's not very well received. I understand they're going to be three stories tall, and we're already in a fire hazard up there. So I do also understand that can increase our exposure to fires. So let me see, nothing specific. Just that we'd like to know if there's going to be a scheduled public hearing on the matter? If this is something that the public is going to have the ability to vote for, or is it just going to be their council? So these are some of the things that we'd like to know in advance before you vote on it, and I just want your reassurance that that's going to happen for us.
Yeah, just to let you know, there's the application process. Staff will get it and do all the due process on it, notifications that go out, and then we will hear about it eventually as it comes to us, because we're not actually in that loop until it gets here so that we can make an independent decision. And we'll hear testimony from everybody before we actually make a decision.
Okay, and as far as whether you'll be making the decision or the city residents will be? Do you know that yet either?
The buck will stop here.
It'll be a council decision?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for the input. That must be the neighbors that didn't want to come up and talk, huh? Thank you for being here. We appreciate you being here, at least for moral support. That takes us to item Public 10, which is a public hearing for a tentative map and development review permit for a 13-lot residential subdivision with 12 proposed single-family homes on a 2.46-acre site located at 9463 Slope Street in the low-medium-density residential zone, and finding the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to the Class 32 infill exemption, SEQA Guidelines, Section 15, 332. The applicant is New West Investment Group, and Rachel?
Yes. So good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. I'm Rachel Underbecky with the Planning and Building Department, and tonight's item for your consideration is the request for a tentative map and development review permit for a 13-lot subdivision and 12 single-family homes located at 9463 Slope Street. The 2.46-acre site is located south of Slope Street with the east and south property lines bordering the City of Alcohone. The project site consists of one single-family home, one unpermitted dwelling unit, and residential accessory structures. The project site is located in the low-medium-density residential zone, or R2, which has a maximum allowable density of five units per gross acre. The project proposes a density of 4.88 units per gross acre in compliance with the R2 zone. The project site is also located approximately a half mile from Gillespie Field Airport and is within Airport Influence Area 1, Safety Zone 3. Due to the project's location, both the Federal Aviation Administration and the San Diego County Regional Airport Authority reviewed the proposed project and determined that the project as designed presents no hazard to air navigation and is consistent with the Gillespie Field Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. This aerial is looking south towards the project site and is outlined here in yellow. Single-family homes are present on three sides of the site: to the west, across Slope Street to the north, and across Wild Boulevard to the south. Commercial buildings are located directly east of the project site. The properties to the north and west are zoned R2, and the properties to the south and east are located within the City of Alcohone. This view is also looking south, specifically from Slope Street, towards the project site. The project includes the demolition of the existing structures and the development of 12 single-family homes on separate lots with the remaining lot being developed as a bioretention basin. The bioretention basin will be privately maintained by the Development's Homeowners Association, as outlined in the project conditions. The residential lots would range in size from 6,009 square feet to 8,437 square feet. Access to the site would be through Slope Street with the addition of a newly constructed cul-de-sac street identified here as LOA. A 20-foot-wide flowage easement is proposed across Lot 7's concrete driveway to support directing any possible runoff towards LOA in the event the drainage located directly south of the project site within the City of Alcohone ever overflowed. The City of Alcohone reviewed the project, and with the incorporation of the proposed drainage improvements, had no comments or concerns. Additional review and signature from the City of Alcohone will be required prior to any grading approval to ensure their concurrence on the final grading and improvement plans. Landscaping is proposed to be installed as part of the project and would include tree shrubs and ground cover. The planted areas would be irrigated with an automatic drip and spray irrigation system with rain-sensing shut-off devices. The project has been designed to comply with the development standards of the R2 zone, including minimum lot size, lot width and depth, lot coverage, setbacks, parking, and building height. The applicant provided two conceptual floor plans and four conceptual elevations for the project. The house sizes are shown with living areas between 999 and 1,857 square feet and include attached garages ranging from 481 to 551 square feet in size. Eight of the 12 residences would be built as 19-foot-tall, single-story buildings, with the remaining four residences being built as 23-foot-tall, two-story buildings. Exterior colors would vary from beige to gray and white stucco with contrasting colored trim and concrete shake roof tiles that would match the tone of the stucco for each residence. Here on the screen is an example of one of the one-story options. There are four variations of the one-story, single-family homes. Here on the screen is an example of one of the two-story options, and there are two variations for the two-story, single-family homes. Staff determined the project exempt from SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15332, for infill development projects because the project is consistent with the general plan and zoning ordinance, is located in an urbanized area on a property less than five acres, has no habitat value, would not result in any significant effect on traffic noise, air quality, or water quality, can be served by all required utilities and public services, and none of the exceptions to the Class 32 exemption found in SEQA Guidelines, Section 15300.2, apply to the project. Therefore, staff recommends that city council conduct and close the public hearing, find the project exempt from SEQA, and approve the project by adopting the resolutions before you. The applicant is present tonight to speak on behalf of the project and answer any questions from council. This concludes the presentation, and staff is also available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Speaker's slip?
The only speaker I have is the applicant, sir, and that's who provided the handout. Would you like me to call him?
You want to come up? Yeah.
Greg Brown?
Good to see you, Ms. Brown.
Good seeing you guys. Well, we've just about finished all the undeveloped land in that area. I think we've ended up building like 50 or 60 houses. I think we've changed the entire area there, what it was and what it currently is. I want to thank this young lady because she was extremely helpful wherever she is. There. Okay. She did the switcheroo on me, but anyway, she's extremely helpful. And John Keen over there, I've been working with for I don't even know how long. The guy is an oracle of wealth of information, and John has just been exceptional. I do want to bring up three-
I wish you wouldn't have said that. I'd go to his head.
Yeah, I know. I know. But there was like three different issues that I would like to bring up to the council. One of them is undergrounding, one of them is an offset of permit... or not building permits, but school fees, drainage fees, park fees, and traffic fees for the existing units that were there, which there were three. So we'd like to have an offset of those. The other thing is, we are solving the City of Alcohone's drainage problem. We are having to put in a 48-inch pipe that not one drop of our water is going in. That pipe currently traverses across our property, dumps back into where the old Bucknives property was, which has been a heck of a problem for those guys. They've been flooded out a number of times. I don't know if the City of Alcohone has some kind of a reimbursement, but I... And I have faith in your engineering department, but I think that line of communication needs to be opened because the way they've got their drainage set up for the Bucknives property isn't consistent with what they show on their own drawings. And this 48-inch pipe is just a big onerousome problem for us when we really are not even using it, okay? So that's one thing. The offset is the other thing, and again, I'm happy just working with the staff and whatever they come up with, I'm fine with that. The third thing has to do with undergrounding. So we gave you guys a handout. We did a project over on Pryor. And we meet the criteria, which is less than 200 feet, and we're the only ones that would be undergrounding. So what we're going to suggest to you is kind of a hybrid, which is what we did on Pryor. So do you guys see the pictures of Pryor? So what, if you look at the before pictures and the after pictures, you can't even see the power lines. What you do see is all of the transmission lines, which there was like, I don't know, at least two or three, and there are those big, ugly wires. So what I'm going to suggest is, we'll put all the future underground in. We will underground all the...
All right, thanks. I do have a couple of quick questions for you, because when we talk about the undergrounding, and you show the two pictures of Pryor, one and two, is what you call them?
Yes, right. Two is what the next door looks like, and it looked like that in front of Pryor. And then I did Pryor, and that's what it looks like now.
Okay, and in one of the pictures, there's actually, you can see the transformer on the pole. And then in the other picture, you don't see a transformer. And so my guess is that what you did... If there wasn't a transformer on that pole before, doesn't make a whole lot of difference. But if there was, then you moved that down and got it ready for, you know, a future?
I'd be lying to you if I told you exactly what happened because I built it like five or six years ago.
I remember. I think I was out there.
You did. Do you remember what you did out there on the street?
Yeah, I think I helped dedicate it-
Yes, you did.
-to a son or...
Yes, to a kid that died. And so we named it after him. I think it was called Shane's Way. That was very cool.
Remember very clearly.
So if you look at like where it's... Oh, Shane's Way, yeah, that's it. So if you look at it, you can hardly see the wires. And that's what I'm proposing, because that, to me, makes sense. So even though we meet the criteria, the two criteria where we're under 200 feet, and we don't have any other things over there underground, we're proposing to do that.
Okay, and then the other issue was the offset fees. Did you mean to offset them, meaning not pay them at all, or defer them until the end?
No, what I'm suggesting is the drainage fee, the park fee, whatever fees other than the building department, because the building is a new structure. But any of those other fees, I think, and they've always been that way. Even when we did Pryor, we tore down two houses, and there was an offset. So... Exactly.
Yeah, basically, credit for the existing facilities that are on the property now.
That's why I was getting... I wanted to make sure that I understood the terms. And then I guess, Rachel, one of the questions would be, is there not an offset proposed on this one? Or whom could answer that?
I just didn't hear it, so that's why I said...
There... Sorry. There is an offset on specific fees. I believe Carl could probably speak to the specifics, but yes, there is an offset for specific fees as it relates to the two existing homes. Just not all of them.
Well, we're not offsetting all of them. There's actually... There was three homes.
Well, in the application, it was provided that there were two units. And so when we researched the units and whether or not they were legal throughout the permitting system, we determined that they were. We were informed that one of the units was vacating. So we gave him credit for the fees that were already paid for one of the units because that's what we could show. So if you look on the staff report under impact fees, you can see that one existing legal dwelling unit is already credited within those fees.
And then there's two more to be credited, then?
That's my opinion, and I can show-
Hold on a second, Ms. Brown.
We were trying to determine what fees and units were already legalized and where we'd already received fees, and we were only able to justify that for one unit.
So then, in other words, we would either have to get more information on the third unit to offset or waive?
Definitely, because tonight's the first time we heard there was a third unit.
Okay. Is time of the essence on this? Ms. Brown? Is time of the essence on this approval for tonight?
I want this approved, but I'm happy working with your staff. You know, I'm telling you, this is such an arduous process. Here is a picture of the two units with the two meters, okay?
Okay, here's what I'm thinking, is that we continue this to the next council meeting, if we can, and get all those questions answered? Can we do that? Can we do that? Oh, no, I mean, because I don't want to put anybody in a big bind, or we could also approve something contingent upon following up on the offset.
I mean, I'd defer to the applicant if he wants to defer it for two more weeks.
I don't want to defer it. What I want to do is, I don't have any problem working with your staff. I'd like to have it approved and let me work that out with your staff. If we have a beef, we'll come back.
Okay.
But I've always worked with you guys for 30 years now.
Years, yeah. No, I get that. I remember clearly. I just want to make sure that we're getting everything done, that we can get done, and that everything's done appropriately. So let me see if the council has any other questions. Councilmember McNellis?
My understanding is that we, when we did the, I want to say rebates in the past, that it was, some of the work was, some of the water, the water work was, some of the fees were due to its impact on the rest of the city, correct? And this doesn't have that same situation or scenario. I'm also, my concern is the undergrounding. I mean, that has been, that's actually been one of the big pushes that this council, well, not just this council, but even councils before us have had, is making sure that everything gets undergrounded as anything moves forward. I understand that the frontage of this may not, that has lines across it, may not carry a lot of weight, but if staff is okay with the underground, with the conduit basically being put underground in anticipation of future development, that's one thing. But if they, if not, I also understand that, and I want to make sure that we underground everything that we possibly can underground.
Councilmember, the tricky part with that is, is the way the municipal code is written. It requires council to make that. Staff can't work directly with the applicant and make that determination ourselves. Council has to make the determination the way it's written in the code currently. And just to be clear, I know we've been working close with his team, and this was a pretty new thing that came to us, and we've been researching it last day or so, and email correspondence. And I think, you know, a little miscommunication, but one of the exemptions, I think they're looking for, it has a two-part exemption. It's not only a 200 feet, but it also requires the value of the building improvements is less than 50% of the current market value of all the buildings on the lot. That's not the case here. It's a two-part exemption. So that would require City Council to go through the exemption process. Staff cannot do that directly with the applicant team. So if the determination was made tonight, we have another process within this which would require him to come back at a later date. And if you recall, Prospect Estates 2, the applicant at that time came back with that request, and that whole process, I believe it was denied at that time by City Council. So there is a separate process, exemption E, and we can work directly with the applicant if he wants to move forward. But the way it's written right now, he would not be exempt from the undergrounding requirement.
So if I'm not, I'm okay. So I believe what he's saying. I don't, I'm not going to try to push the thing uphill if it's not the way it's, if we made a mistake when we interpreted, so be it.
And so that's basically what he's stating is, this is the project that you presented that was approved by the staff, and this is the way it's going forward. If you choose to make any alterations, deletions, anything of the nature, it's going to go back to them and then come back to us.
I understand.
So we either approve it the way it is or we send it back.
Got it.
Which would you prefer?
Well, I think what his point is that we didn't do our homework right and that the two-part, we may have made a mistake-
Fair enough, but I'm asking you, what would you prefer? We approve it tonight, or would you rather it come back?
On that issue?
On all of the issues?
Well, tentative map is what we're talking about approving tonight.
Right.
Yeah. We're talking about the tentative map, and with regards to the tentative map, the only issue with the tentative map would be the undergrounding. So I think I would, I would say we'll continue with the undergrounding. And if we have another, if we have other evidence that will help support making sense, then we'll bring that point back. So we would be approving the tentative map with not the exception.
With staff's recommendation?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That makes it clear for me.
Thank you.
And all I'm asking for on the other two things is that we just work with your staff. And if they, just like he said, if we misinterpreted something and the staff can show me something, fine, I'm not going to argue about it.
Fair enough.
Vice Mayor?
No, motion to approve, staff recommendation.
Second.
All right. Anything?
Yeah, I just have a question. What's the building that's not legal, I guess, on the property?
I don't know what she's talking about because there's a duplex that people lived in with meters.
It's an additional unit that we couldn't find record of in our building permits.
As it currently stands, right?
I mean, I've walked by that property and it's-
(laughing)
I was just curious.
The one house, we had a problem. We kept thinking we were going to go ahead and get here quicker, so it was inhabited by two people, by two different families, okay? So I don't, I think we're, she might be talking about a building that may not be permitted, and I take her word for it. So we're really talking about the basic two little houses. We can work that out.
All right, then. I have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
That takes us to item number 11, a public hearing on the, on, public hearing on and resolution adopting the Transnet Local Street Improvement Program of projects for fiscal years 2025 through 2029, amending the capital improvement program budget and finding the action is not a project subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. Carl?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This item before you tonight, as you mentioned, is a public hearing. This is a required public hearing as part of the Transnet program as it was adopted and amended through all of the resolutions and requirements through Sandag. And again, just to reiterate a little bit what the Regional Transportation Improvement Program is, short is our tip. We've all heard tip, our tip, different tips. That's what this one is. And it's a five-year plan identifying all the projects in San Diego County, in the region, that are significant to the region and also use sales tax money. And when I talk about sales tax, the Transnet ordinance specifically for us, and this also applies to every other agencies, requires us every two years to adopt a five-year program of projects. And what that is about is, everybody's aware of Transnet, and they've heard it. It was Proposition A. It had two separate amendments going back some time. The last one was in 2008. It's a half-cent sales tax that we all pay, and it goes to regionally significant projects. Santee has allocated a portion through formulas for that. And what you see kind of on the bottom, these are the numbers that they projected that would come to Santee in the coming years. There was a little bit of an increase in the first year, and there's decreases in outer years. Again, these are crystal ball numbers. We change them every two years, and council's seen before. We come back regularly with amendments as numbers change each year. But we are required to do this through a public hearing and bring it before council, just like all the other agencies. So this is our opportunity for transparency through the board, and the reason why we do it at this time right now, it's a pretty lengthy process. Those that you attend Sandag know, all of us agencies do this. We approve the resolutions. We submit them to Sandag. The Sandag Board of Representatives approves them. They send them to the state. The state then approves them, and then they send them to the feds. So it's a pretty lengthy process. It takes months and months to do, and that's why we're starting it, and it's for next fiscal year, for the next five years. The projects that we are using here are all consistent with the current capital improvement program. Transnet itself specifically, the half-cent sales tax measure funding, we fund three programs for it. The payment repair and rehabilitation, payment roadway maintenance, and regional arterial management system. And again, the reason why we break it out this way, and some of the rules and specific rules associated with this, we have requirements for how much we can spend in certain categories. For rehab and rehabilitation, 70% of the money has to be spent on that, and 30% has to be spent for maintenance. So we're working closely with the board. They're looking at changing some of those rules because more of us have a need for maintenance applications, not rehabilitation. And the regional arterial management system is, it's a region-wide system. We all participate in, and it's regional connectivity for traffic signal timing and connectivity throughout the region. It's small, it's $7,500, but we are required by the laws and the rules to report and program. So the next projects we have, because they are regionally significant, we also have to report on those. Those are part of the conditions as well. And these projects listed here, broadband infrastructure, Quea Maca Street right turn at Mission Gorge, Santee Town Center specific plan, the smart traffic signals, and traffic signal communication upgrades. The reason why we're doing these is because they are regional significant, and they use some of that money that also is taxpayer or other tax money used in these programs that we use. And Sandag has to report on these for various reasons, those being Air Resource Board reporting, regionally significant impacts. These are all state, federal mandates that we have to do. So with that, staff is just recommending we conduct the public hearing, adopt the resolution adopting the Transnet Local Street Improvement Program of projects for fiscal year '25 through '29, and amending the adopted capital improvement project to reflect these new numbers, which are different than what's in the approved capital program. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Speaker's left.
No speakers, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember McNellis, anything?
Motion to approve, staff recommendation.
Thank you.
Second.
Any other comments? Comments?
I have a question. What, why does the federal government have to approve it? It's not related to any money. It's just some kind of oversight board or whatever?
It's because of the federal funding and stuff that comes through our region as well, our MPOs, Sandag, all the different MPOs for the regions. We also have to report to the federal government as well what we're doing with federal tax dollars, not necessarily the local tax, but we have to combine any of that money that has federal or other state money in it so that the feds can track it as well.
Just to follow up on that, though, Laura, MPOs or metropolitan and planning organizations are actually created by federal legislation. And so money goes to the state, and then it gets divvied out from there. So it looks like state or even local funding, but a lot of times it's federal funding. And the only reason why we have Sandag is because that organization was created by state legislation to act as the MPO. So it's bureaucracy at its best. I probably should have just started with that. All right, then. I have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And that takes us to item number 12, which is a resolution approving the extension of the additional 12-hours Basic Life Support Ambulance Trial through the end of fiscal year '23, '24, utilizing part-time emergency medical technicians, improving the appropriation of $13,000 from the Emergency Medical Services Unrestricted Fund Balance to the Emergency Medical Services Division of the City of Santee Fire Department. Operating budget. Fire chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. This is essentially, to summarize, a request for the extension of the trial study that you approved in January of, earlier this year. Just to recap, when we received our report from AP Triton last year, it, you know, it basically told us a story that we already knew, that our paramedic units were extremely busy. There is a term that we use, UHU, which represents the unit hour utilization, and that just means how much time one of our units is on task, how much time they're committed to a call. And the threshold, the standard nationally is about .30. And what these figures represent is how busy our units were compared to those, to that standard. And at the time, we had four paramedic transport units, and you could see that Medic 4 and Medic 2 are extremely busy. They're in the .40 range, and this was from 2022. And we started to look at, what are some strategies that we could implement once we took over operational administrative control of SLMSA, used to be CSA 69. And we had presented years ago the concept of putting a 12-hour BLS, which means Basic Life Support. It's a lower-level acuity ambulance unit as opposed to our ALS, which is Advanced Life Support Ambulances that we've had throughout SLMSA slash CSA 69 for decades. And we decided that we wanted to try to deploy a 12-hour unit during the day because 71% of our calls, all of the calls, occurred during the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So it made sense, kind of a crawl, walk, run mentality. We're just going to try it out, and we're going to start off with a 12-hour unit during the daytime. And over the last year, we've done quite a bit. And I really got to applaud the council members and the commission from SLMSA because we were able to do stuff over a one-year period that we've been talking about for decades. And those items include hiring a nurse coordinator, deploying a 12-hour BLS unit in Lakeside, a 12-hour BLS unit in Santee, hiring a medical director between all the agencies throughout the central zone, AKA the East County, altering our dispatch procedures so we could decrease the amount of time that our ALS ambulances are deployed. And then additionally, the most recent was the approval of the trial study in January. And what the trial study proposed was, we wanted to look at these two segments. We wanted to look at the night portion and the day portion because we knew that overall, after putting in those two 12-hour units during the day, that we were able to make some positive changes. And if you see the before and after numbers, what those represent is, before we started those two 12-hour units between Santee and Lakeside, that's the left-hand column. After is pretty much from that point forward, which was May, June, all the way through the end of last year. The two highlighted figures are really Medic 2 and Medic 4, showing that they were still very busy. They're still very busy. And so we took a more granular look. We said, well, let's break this down to 12-hour increments, and Chief Wallace has been instrumental in supplying this data for all of us. And we said, well, let's see how they look during the day and the night. And we see that all the units are above that .30 figure. Makes sense, right? Because we talked about 71% of our calls are during the daytime hours. But we found that there is this one outlier, Medic 4, which is our ambulance, still very busy, busiest unit in all the SLMSA, and it's busy at night. And we know it. We've known this for quite some time. And so we implemented this two-phase trial. We wanted to try to put a 12-hour unit at night for two months, which we've now concluded, and we are in the middle of a two-hour daytime trial. So during the night, if you look at the numbers, the numbers in red are the after. We went, we had some impact. We had some positive impacts. If you look at Medic 4, we went down from 31 to 26, which is good. And some of our other figures you see went down incrementally. What's challenging, though, is you're digesting those numbers, is some went up because there is these kind of ebbs and flows of how busy we are, and it just happened to be, over the last two months, a busy time period. So overall, the system just got busier. And that's why we wanted to really make this a longer trial so we could see over a four-month period, et cetera, you know, what the impact's going to be. And so as of right now, you know, looking at the night, we see that, we believe it made a positive impact. So we're currently during, doing the daytime trial. We're halfway through it, and we've already seen that it is also having a positive impact. And so we know that overall, this is good. What we do not know yet is whether or not we want to commit to a night car or a day car. But we know we need a third transport unit. We know we need another 12-hour unit. And our desire is to continue to staff this with a part-time workforce. Because one benefit that we did not anticipate is how beneficial this would be for our part-time workforce, getting experience and allowing us to then get a look at this part-time workforce that we intend to hire as our full-time employees moving forward. So ourself and Lakeside, we want to commit to this model moving forward indefinitely. We would like for this to continue throughout this fiscal year. We know there's a decision-making process for next fiscal year, and we intend to propose that in the next fiscal year's budget. Understandably, that has to be financially sustainable, but we do believe it is. And we do believe also, the part-time staffing model is the most financially responsible because it is cheaper as well. So there's all these benefits that we're seeing, and that's why I'm asking today for the extension of this trial through the end of this fiscal year so we don't have to shut it down while we await our fate for next fiscal year because it's having a positive impact. And we'll address this next fiscal year through the budget- budget proposal process. So we're asking for the extension of the 12-hour BLS ambulance trial and the appropriation of $13,000 from our EMS fund. Now, the $13,000, just to be clear, that's our half. Lakeside is also taking care of half. So this third unit is shared between both Santee and Lakeside. And so the concept that we'll be proposing indefinitely is continue to share the cost between our two agencies. And that's the end of my report.
I don't want, oh, I didn't want to say anything. I'm sorry.
Oh.
Uh, motion to approve.
I do.
I saw you pushed the microphone button.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, I just want, one, I want to say thank you very much for, for bringing this forward, um, understanding that you may have had some anomaly time periods in here. And so wanting to take this experiment out a little further to see what was the anomaly or what wasn't. Uh, I think that information helps us make a better decision for a, a permanent basis. So, um, I appreciate you guys doing that. Appreciate you also looking at the part-time staffing. I know it's something that in the past, never wanted, no one ever wanted to have happen is everybody, wanted everybody to be on the same page and doing the same thing. So I, I appreciate you understanding the fis, fiscal impacts that, that this has on not only our city, but the community of Lakeside as well. So I think you guys are doing a, a really good job of being stewards of, of the taxpayers' money. And, um, I second the motion to approve this.
Thank you. Have anything?
Chief, the, so we have two ALS units in, in Lakeside and two in Santee currently, right? And this, this is a, a third BLS unit?
It's a third BLS unit.
Where would that be, uh, stationed at?
The plan for now is for it to be stationed at Station Four. And part, and mostly it's because if you look at the numbers, and I know, trust me, we, we all, we all know, we, we cringe about putting more resources at Station Four. But i- it's honestly a sacrifice that our personnel are willing to make because we, we know the numbers. Our, we have a very educated workforce and we know that Medic Four is the busiest unit. We know that that is the hub of our calls. So I know it's not optimal, but it is where the unit is the most needed. And so if we do extend this trial and we continue to staff this indefinitely, we will try moving it around to some other locations. But the locations would be pretty much limited between Station Four, Station One, and maybe Station Two. The, the triangulation of those three stations are where the bulk of our calls are. So, you know, it, but as of right now, it makes a lot of sense to be at fours.
And Lakeside has how many stations?
Lakeside has four stations.
Four stations. They have two ALS units and four stations.
That's correct.
Where are their two BLS units housed?
They have, their, their one BLS unit is housed at Station Two right now.
Which is where Medic Two is?
It's where Medic Two is. But that's because Station One is, is undergoing a remodel. They're essentially doing what, they already had a temporary fire station there, but they're replacing it with an upgraded one. And Harley, I don't know if they're, is that up and running yet? Okay, so the plan when that was back up and running was to move that BLS unit back to Station One.
Yeah, pretty interesting what you described there. Seeing how we're in baseball season, uh, the, uh, part-time ambulance is our farm team, right?
They are. And all, and it has been one of the best things that I've seen in my career for this department. It's, uh, it's been a really enthusiastic workforce. Our personnel are so engaged at helping them to get to the next level. And we hear nothing but positives from our, our EMTs that this is the place to work. We embrace them, we bring them in, we treat them like, like they're part of the family. And that's our plan, is to continue to do that. And the interesting thing, Councilwoman McNillis, is, is that this is actually a workforce that, that kind of has a desire to be part-time because of the flexibility. Because the people that we are targeting, they want to be firefighter paramedics, which means that they need to have time off available to go to paramedic school and to go to fire academies. And so this part-time option allows them a lot more flexibility.
All right, I have a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We go to non-agenda public comment. Any other?
No speakers, sir.
All right then. And, uh, city council reports. Uh, Laura?
Yeah, just a quick update on a very cool, um, East County Chamber of Commerce event that I, um, participated in. I forget the date, but it was, um, uh, it's called Ethics in Business. And Karen Fleck, um, actually is the chair of that event. A lot of people in the community know Karen. Um, Captain Rob Rantz from the Alcohone Police Department was the keynote speaker. He does a great job. And basically what, it's a six-hour day with, uh, high school kids from Grossmont Union High School District. And, um, you, you sit at a table with a group of kids from different schools and, and discuss ethics in business, um, go through a lot of scenarios. I thought an interesting one, I mean, ethics, you, you would think it's black and white, but there's, you know, the kids have to think about it and there's some gray areas in there. And one of the interesting questions was, um, you know, you're, you're out of sick time at your work, but your best friend is getting married. My phone's talking back to me. I must have just said Alexa or something. I don't know. Anyway, um, so yeah, you're, uh, you ran out of your sick time or your PTO and you, your best friend is getting married in like, uh, some, you know, island or something. And you didn't plan ahead, obviously. Uh, but what do you do? Do you tell your supervisor or do you just not show off? You know, and it was interesting to hear the kids work through those kinds of questions. What would you say? Should they go to the HR department and let them know or just go ethically?
Are you asking me or Rita?
No, I'm, Rita, I'm asking HR director.
Yeah, asking, that's an HR question.
She declines. Oh, anyway, um, it was a very, it was a very great day.
I'm not answering Rita.
Yeah, true HR. Okay, but that's my update.
I would have asked that a little bit different. Uh, Rita, would it be better to ask for forgiveness or permission?
It is interesting what they came up with.
I'm not going to ask what they came up with. Uh, the only report I have is that, um, Sandag is going through, uh, more, um, interviews this Friday. We're going to interview three other folks for the, um, position as, uh, chief executive officer. Uh, it's going to be a very busy, long day. And by the way, I know that, uh, James is in the back. He did interviews over in Alcohone today. So he understands what it's like to sit there and do interviews for a long period of time. And, uh, so that's what we'll do. Probably be there about six hours on Friday. And then, um, next week I'll be in Sacramento Tuesday through Saturday, uh, with Legislative Action Days. There's a, uh, long list of, uh, new bills that have been introduced. Uh, I think there was almost 3,000 bills this last year. And many of them are not good for any of us. And whether it has to do with fire or building or other things. And we're going to go up there and talk to legislatures, uh, legislators about, um, what's going to help us and what's going to hurt us. And then we'll follow up that week, uh, with a board of directors meeting and make some final decisions on support and oppose bills. So that's what I've got going on. Vice Mayor?
Uh, I actually want to share with you guys that our river conservancy meeting was able to get just over 1.6 million dollars for the city of Santee. Uh, that breaks down to $900,000, uh, grant for river cleanup. Um, this is out, through our, really for, from our fire department, putting these grants in. But $900,000 for river cleanup, about $500,000 for another type three brush rig and just over $210,000 for equipment and training for our staff.
Excellent.
Yeah. And then, uh, Captain Hernandez, who's the gentleman sitting to your left?
That is our new lieutenant, Lieutenant George Jarrara.
We call him JJ because we can't pronounce his last name most of the time. So he's good with that. Anything? Okay. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things really quickly. Welcome to Lieutenant JJ. Uh, we're really happy to have you here. You're way behind the column there. Um, there is a new event that is coming to the city of Santee. It is this Saturday. It's a brand new program that celebrates our community, uh, from past to future and all across our wonderful history. It's called the Santee Community Celebration. It is at the, I'm not going to say Polo Barn because the historical society will say it's not Polo, but it is the historic Edgemore Barn on Magnolia. Uh, you want to be there sometime between 11:00 and 2:00. It's going to be a great event. It's got music, food, activities for the kids. It's a wonderful family event and we hope it will be the first, uh, annual one moving forward. So if you're not doing anything on Saturday, or if you'd really like to know more about the city of Santee, please come and join us down at the Edgemore Barn on Magnolia. Item number two, we have, and it's free by the way. Uh, item number two, which isn't free, but it helps support a really good cause, is we got approval late this afternoon, roughly about 5:30, that our adopted marine unit at Miramar is able to help certify that we're going to be able to have a fundraising golf tournament to help them, uh, raise money for their Marine Corps ball, for their military ball, for their birthday ball. And it's going to be on May 31st at Carlton Oaks. So if anybody would like more information, there are flyers at the back of the room. Those of you at home watching on TV, uh, it will be posted on the city website tomorrow so that you can take a look at it. We encourage everybody to come and participate. It does directly support our active-duty Marine Corps units that the city has adopted. There are opportunities for foursomes to play. You have the opportunity to play not only just you and a good friend, but also to add in two active-duty Marines to play with you. And you can support just the Marines if you would like to. You can sponsor a hole. You can sponsor other types of items that will help us provide fundraising opportunities for our Marines. So if you're interested in trying to support the military along with the city of Santee, we encourage you to participate in that as well. So two big opportunities to have fun here in Santee in the next two months. That's all I have, sir.
City manager, is the event for Saturday rain or shine?
The event for Saturday is rain or shine is my understanding. I'm looking at Nick, but yes.
Put that out there.
Won't be the first time we got wet. City, uh, attorney?
No, no report, Mayor.
No report. All right then. That, uh, we have no closed session, so I guess that means we're done. So we'll call the, uh, call, call the meeting adjourned.